Yeah. Sorry.
Well, Tom, to the Monday, nine, July 25, 2022 Planning Commission meeting of Sagitton Township. First of all, the role. Butler, Brown, here, Almrich.
Here.
Israels here, Webster, you're worth is not going to be in attendance this evening. Second, on the agenda is some questions, if you would like to join in. The first thing, um, the next thing, actually, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections that anyone would like to make on the agenda this evening? I have, I have one, okay, sorry. I don't need to do that, but I'm always trying to let you have a couple of thoughts. If you have anything, just let me know. First of all, I'd like to give you tonight a copy of the draft revision of the rules and procedures. And it's just a draft of the consolidation of what we all did back a month ago. In June. And then, um, the next steps for that. So we'll talk about that, and that will be under seven A. And seven B, I would like to just talk about the consultant that we hired to work with the ordinances for the planning commission and for the township. So we'll talk about that in item B in Monday. Maybe you can introduce the project a little bit. I have the information here with me from the consultant, too. So we can let everyone know how that process will be going, okay? Those are the only two things I have. Anyone else have any addition? I don't have the township board update.
Oh, yes, yes.
So number C will be the township board update. And also, do we need to add a staff update today? Well, sure. So item D would be the staff update. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amendment? So move. And it moved by Webster and supported by Isley. Although in favor, please say aye. You want to post? Okay, thank you. The next is approval of the minutes. Well, let's get started.
Daniel, do you know what this is? The minutes that I sent Jennifer with the corrections and that she, and I spent some time and I already reviewed them. They're trying to catch all the tidbits and so forth. Are these still in the minutes or don't you know?
I do not know.
Okay. Well, hopefully there is. That's what we was reviewing. So hopefully there's very minimal that you will find that's missed.
Okay, so we are looking first of all, uh, the May 25? Or are you looking?
May 25.
So May 25, so that's kind of out of order on the agenda, but if that's okay. May 25, 22.
Small thingy.
So which? I don't have. Okay. I think it was the 23rd, too. It's May 23. Okay, first correction. It's the 23rd, alright. Any other corrections on page one? Or page two? Page three? Page four? Fifth paragraph, second line from the bottom of the fifth paragraph. So it is that item. Um. That page six? Page four? Five? I think some of the language in this, it's a little confusing as it comes up. Whatever machine you're using, but I'm guessing I'm tempted. On page six, the fifth paragraph. So there was. Seven? Under item C. On the eighth one, after qualifications, I think, two. And a request for qualifications to. Um, I think the, here, the first large river, it's the, and the ravines will be able to be moved. It's, and the ravines could be able to be moved, which would make, it doesn't necessarily make the fire department happy. But that would make the fire department happy, maybe. Anything else? That motion says the motion was made by Butler to at least one person. We just need a third one that issue with us. I just need to describe what it just says in this issue. I, I think she's asking to have the motion described. Yeah. You know, the motion made to have this issue, we need to say what issue.
And if we were to send the river overlay. Yeah. But when aren't we changing them? If this is taken off, off the transcript, are you not now changing the motion?
Yeah.
So it's. Yeah, but it came from, she did a copy and paste from here. So if that's what was said on the, on the recording, wouldn't we have to keep it same? We can't add to anything on the motion if that was not said.
It was relevant in the paragraph where it was first described, but on the last page, it's not apparent what it's regarding. I think then when the motion is made at the table, we need to ask for clarification of the motion. But we didn't ask for clarification of the motion. So you're saying leave it as it is.
I, I suggest we leave it as is because if she's taking it off the recording, that's what, how it was said on the recording. And then that's a copy and paste to the backside.
Okay. If, right?
If you know the intention, we could put it in brackets just for posterity. You know, so it's, the brackets would indicate that that was literally said, but it would at least indicate what this refers to. All right, you don't have to do that, though.
Well, again, if we read our minutes, it's under the natural river overlay. So we were talking about that. So that's what the issue is. It's under that B of the issue. And then back sheet is just a, a quick synopsis of the motion.
Okay.
That's why I always read the minutes. I would leave it, that's my advice.
Alright, we're fine with reading those, but, okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 23? With that's amended, with correction.
Should the date there be changed?
Yes, yeah. I think that's the first thing to change.
No, no.
Yes, we are.
So they were approved, so why not make?
Oh, but it's not.
Before, so I don't, isn't that language?
That is not correct.
To be today's day.
Today, I think, July 25. Thank you. And then you'll sign off.
Yeah, so Daniel, what, when would these be corrected that I will come in and have to sign? I've only signed one, I think, set a minute. I have so long, right? I have 10 days or something, you have 10 days to do this, this is approved?
I have to check the date for the approval of the minutes, but I believe that we have eight days to present something, like at least a rough draft of minutes.
Okay, so then I come in and. I'll work with you later.
Okay.
Okay. That's on the agenda is the planning mission minutes of 627, 22. So that last one, two. Is there any, anything on the first and only page?
Public comment, or I'm just questioning if Esther has spelled correctly, how she spells it. Usually there's an H and a P.
Like, you know, I can check that, I have an email from. Again, um.
And do we need to clarify at the top that it wasn't a regular meeting of the planning commissions? With the session?
It was a study session. So should we say that? I think that's not a good idea.
It's not a PC.
Business. It's a study session. Does that sound appropriate on it? For a study session related to?
No votes were taken, it was not like tonight's.
I like that. Better related to. Alright. Um. And again, the same correction on the back. The minutes were approved on. These minutes were approved before we even had the meeting.
Right.
A copy and paste. Okay, so, uh, July 25, again. 2022. And by the planning commission. Okay. Is there a motion to approve? If I was to, if I was to, by, 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 through the minutes, of the planning commission study session, it's 27, 23. Thank you. Oh, it's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. So I want to be a little clear on tonight's meeting for everyone that's in the audience. I want you to understand that this is not a public hearing. You have, you can certainly have the option for public comment, but we've already had a public hearing on this. So it's a particular, public hearing, we went, believe, last year in November. And so it is, so, an opportunity for you to present anything that you would like to present this evening for planning commission. So as always, in the planning commission, we ask that when you come to the microphone, you do say your name and say your address, and we would like you to sign in if you're speaking. I think the sign in sheets are in the back, and it just helps us in recording minutes as to who was here and where you live. Okay. We also ask that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes. And we want to hear what you have to say, it's very important to us. But if you're speaking for a group of people, you just please let us know that, too. And then you have an additional two minutes, so you can actually speak for five at that point. I think that's it. So at this part of the meeting, I would like to jump to public comments and ask if there's anyone in row one who would like to address the planning commission. Oh, well, row two, it's fine. Anyone in the front row, please? That's a good question. Is he on?
He is on, but we have challenges with that microphone, it's just not very loud.
Well, I'll do the best I can. I'm Larry Dickey, I live in 6108 Old Elegant Road, Sagitton. My wife and I have lived there for 42 years. And I'm offering some comments that my wife also would like I have made. Right. We've been disappointed twice with this project. 33rd, first in 1999, when the ravines dumped the original pit for construction use on that property. And then left it as it was finished for almost 20 years. And then when ravines took over, they promised to have finished project, a pond that was lovely. And we believe that that will happen. So I appreciate what I've seen in the, in the work and the path. That hopefully it'll open to that requirement, that we'll come up with something that looks better than what we've got now. We have a couple of concerns. When ravines first dug their well and started pumping for irrigation, our well, which was threatened to allow it to blow up the pond, will dry. And we have in the back about 300 yards of the property. We're concerned that if there's any way to know if the aquifer, or the additional draw that's going to go to fill that pond and keep it filled. And if there's any way to know that, or if there's any responsibility. If we were to lose our well or any, if we lose our well water, we're all on hold. Um. And then within the project definition itself, there are two things that we're wondering about. I see that there's no mention of monitoring oil or chemicals or water. I don't know if that's required when the ravines well, it's strictly for irrigation, maybe that's not required. We've been concerned from the beginning about things that are brought into the property, that pot soil. If there's any monitoring of that soil, drain off of the pot. We're wondering about the continued use of the ravines well. We know that there is not a final agreement yet, but I wonder if there should be in the final contract, some kind of amusement that will maintain that well use from one owner to another over a long period of time. We're also wondering that pond will be a source of water for firefighting in our. Something about that. It mentioned something about fire keeping to the fire department's requirements, but I don't know if that was one requirement. Water would be available, accessible. And.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Anyone else in that row, right now? In the next row? Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Or the commission? In the back row? Would anyone like to?
My name is Gina Dowcheck, I live at 6045133. Been a property owner since 2006. When this project began, we were guaranteed that it would be harmonious to the surrounding area. Not a hazardous to adjacent properties. And I think if you look at it, if it were in your backyard, you would say it's not, matter of fact. Probably say to yourselves, thank goodness this isn't in my backyard. But, you know, it's a unsightly crater. It doesn't hold water like it's supposed to. And I think it's a lot larger than it's supposed to be. We moved here from Grand ledge, get closer to the grandkids. And we moved here because of quality of the community. And we invested heavily, you know, in the community, and, and we love it here. We just want a harmonious community. We recognize that you are a new commission with integrity. And we fully, the neighbors from the ones I've talked to, fully support this commission. So we just want you to hold the contractor to the original agreement or something that's reasonable. We are depending on you to be our voice, because you are our voice and our representative. I think the contractor duped the last commission. I sure hope they don't dupe you. I think, you know, that's really about it. And, you know, when they were digging this, and I call it a crater, because that's all that it is right now. For two and a half years, we tolerated the truck traffic on 133rd. I hear inklings that there may be some effort to fill this pond somewhere with soil and all that. I share hope that 133rd is not the sole source for truck traffic. I hope Old Elegant absorbs some of that truck traffic, because it's terrible. So, thank you for listening to us. And again, I, I know this is not much of a representation, but trust the, the entire neighborhood. It's, it's very unhappy the way things have gone so far. But I'm always speaking for 6045133. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowcheck.
Adam Check, how's that?
Oh, Adam Check.
I'm in spelling, A-D-A-M-C-Z-Y-K. In Alpine, on Preskill County, I don't have to spell it, more pronounce it.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come up to the microphone?
Randy Newsmo, I reside at 6150 Old Elegant Road, right across the street from the project. I'm not very prepared with facts and things, but I'd like to reiterate what Mary said. We haven't seen a finished product, and it's unsatisfactory at this point. We're also wondering about the water quality in our, our wells. There are quite a number of people that draw up of that vein. And I'm, I'm one of them, I'm directly to the south, and all the water flows towards the river from 133rd, that whole block does. And I'm just, I guess, my point is, just to reiterate the concern that the neighborhood has, and that's, my opinion, from 6150. The curb appeal does not look appealing to me from my property's point of view. I guess that's summed it up, just to let you guys know that there is some objection to this. And hopefully, we'll see a finished product that suits the township and neighborhood. And I appreciate you speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Newsmo. Lenny, is there anyone online who would like to address the board right now?
I have two.
I have two people, yeah, I have two people online. I have Thomas Bergen. If you'd like to speak, Thomas, you can unmute yourself.
Thanks, but I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have Jerry Doon. Jerry, if you'd like to speak, you can unmute yourself. I see no unmuting. And those are the only two participants online.
Are you aware of any correspondence or anything that we have had recently? No, no specific correspondence about negotiating tonight. All right. Is it the appropriate time to have the closed public comment? We've done it this time, public comment is closed. So tonight on our agenda with old business, we have a special tribute for members RJ Prospects and Proprate LLC, sixty-one thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-third Avenue, between Sixtieth and Sixty-second Street, to reduce the size of the approved pond. Parcel zero three dash twenty dash zero one two dash zero zero five dash twenty. A hearing was held in November of twenty twenty-one. Would the people representing the project, like, come to the microphone and talk about? Please introduce yourself.
My name is Ross Veltzma. I'm the contractor and I'm the landlord. So I'm your neighbor, I own the property. And I was the guy in charge of mining the property. So tonight, one thing I wanted to explain to the neighbors was I agree with you guys, this is not a finished product. We're in limbo right now, working this out with the township. What you see out there, I don't like either. So we do agree on that. We're here to fix that, we're here to talk about that and come up with a strategy how we can make that better. So I just want everybody to know that. What got us to this point? I kind of want to explain that a little bit, if it's helpful. Originally, this thing was designed to be a three-point-five acre pond in the water table. I'm gonna maybe ask you to use the board, but I can try to.
You're welcome.
It would really clarify things quickly. I can speak loud enough and everybody can verify.
I have a marker right here.
So originally, we had a project that was going to be designed for a pond as such. Down here was going to be three-point-five acres, edge to edge, sloping up on a one-on-three surface. This was what was approved originally. And this water table would be right here, and this is where we're going to go into the water table to create the pond. As we worked through the project, up in this layer on the top, there was native clay. And as we continued to dig the site, we ran into more and more of this clay, to an amount where we started thinking about, boy, why don't we redesign this or do this? Because in our opinion, this level where the top of the water would be, would be way more aesthetically pleasing up here. Because this hole would be completely covered with water, you gain some nice depth, keep a better quality pond. So at the time, we were about, we were getting towards the end of our first permit and we're getting quite a bit of pressure to shut the mine down because of all the truck traffic, we truly understood that. So at the time, I think it was Greg, and that was manager, we called him, said, can you please come outside and explain some stuff here? So he met me on site and we discussed the option of taking clay and putting clay on at this level. Thus, the water level would then, the water would not be able to penetrate and hold, the water table would always keep the water at that level. You go on the water table, it's always static. It's always set at a certain height. Once you cap it with clay, you have the ability to fluctuate that water table. So by putting that clay there, we could move this line further out. If you look at the original plan, how large this point, this point was, the hole up here today is actually smaller than what we were originally permitted to go. We were originally permitted to go further north, take out a few trees and get it bigger. So at the time, we thought, well, this three-point-five acres could be replicated down here and still be three-point-five acres because the hole wasn't as long on the bottom. That makes sense. It would be wider up here, this point, this point, but the bottom was not as big. So what we did is there was the ash drain over here. We shot agreed on this and we put a pipe in from the ash drain to here. My family goes back a long time on that drain and I didn't realize the sensitivity of the drain. So we put the drain pipe in thinking that it was just a drainage ditch, like a farm ditch for the property. My grandpa, he dug it years ago and maintained it. There's still an excavator back there that was left on the other property. So we pumped the tile in, water began filling, and some of the neighbors can attest to this. So the pond started to come up. That's when we ran into some concern, the ash drain. We worked with Eagle, we plugged the pipe, we stopped, and we're here today. So now, this was going to be the source to give this pond up to that three-point-five, more aesthetically pleasing place. So what's out there today, there's no water built up. So what you see today, why it looks the way it is, is I don't have enough water to source the initial fill. Once the initial fill is in, if it's a good clay liner, it should be able to just evaporate. It's the only thing that takes water out of such a structure like that. If you get the clay in there, that's tight. So we think, based on some of the water that's down there now, there might be a few spots we're going to bore it and check, but anything that is less than a foot, we need to reinforce. So last meetings, we talked about, we talked about reinforcing some of the clay, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. On top of that, we need to come up with a source of water. We understand the concern for the wells or in the area. And this amount of volume of water would take a lot of initial water. So I got thinking about the neighborhood and where we can get that kind of water. Because I truly believe when it comes to maintenance, evaporation is, on the worst of hottest days, max anybody's ever seen, is thirty gallons per acre per hour evaporation. I got that back from Lake Shore Environment. So most residential wells can pump ten to twenty gallons a minute. So a residential well can easily keep up with any evaporation on the surface. In fact, most sprinkler systems in most yards do way more than that, breathe off the body that sounds. So we need to, we need to get this initial fill down. Well, friends of mine own the ravines golf course. They have several stormwater retention ponds on site. And that is where they primarily suck out their water from for irrigation. There's two ways, actually three ways, they fill those ponds. The first way is all the stormwater from the whole development in all the properties go into those ponds. The second is they have a well. The third is they have the ability to do city walk. They have never yet ran city water yet. They've always been able to keep up with storm well water. So I went to them and I asked them, I said, you know, do you have any water mains from those systems close by? Because there's a lot, those are big ponds that they have. They said, in fact, we do, we have one right under property line, we met out there, it's a six-inch main. That's where we came up with the proposed idea to tie into the six-inch main to bring it into the pond. So that kind of gets us up to today where we are with the proposal. The township has done some research, has hired Prime and Noonhoff. Lene, you've done some background on this too, and Prime and Noonhoff was quite helpful on several fronts. We can discuss some of that later, but that, I want to at least get to where we are today. There are some changes again that I want to talk about today, based on some concerns. One of the concerns was, well, what about all the permits for all this? Specifically, you know, being five hundred feet away from the ash drain, which would require an Eagle permit. The other one was, I originally put in here, so if this pipeline coming in goes out, the ravines over here, we were going to design it. So you just have valves on it and it could pump water in. Then you pick all the valves up, once it got up the pipe, it would act as a drain as well. So in case we had a big storm event or flood or water could get in here, there would always be a way for water to go out. And then we would also need a permit for that pipe to go out to Silver Creek. But after talking to an engineer today at an environmental company, they're like, why do you need the outline, Ross? You have a playline pond, you're already pumping it full. You have a tremendous amount of capacity from here to here. The hundred-year flood plain would, or the hundred-year flood would never exhaust that. I wouldn't even do a drain. He said, once you get the initial fill, he said, just maintain it. He said, we have several ponds like that in the community. And he said he could reference that. So it got me thinking, well, that would be a much simpler than what we could do is run a temporary line of ravines over the top of the surface. We wouldn't have to do anything into the property to put a line in, build a pond. Before, when I was having some of these issues, we did apply for a well permit. And we were, we were given a well permit, it's now since expired. It was just a small twenty gallon a minute well permit. The ravines golf course, they've been kind enough to help us solve this, get this full. But I think it makes them really leery to sign anything that goes extended future. Because they don't know, my intention eventually is probably to sell this. They know me, but they don't know who's going to come in and tax. So they said, look, a long-term agreement is going to be a stretch for us. If we were to go back, get the well permit, put a well down, this well, we feel with engineering back backup, could easily maintain the surface loss at this point. Initial fill could be done by the ravines. The other thing that we could consider doing is the time of year is important for the ravines. They said in the spring and in the fall, when they have most water and they don't do any well loading for pond, storms, storm systems keep up. If we push this thing to a June twenty twenty-three finish, like it's being discussed, we could do all our pumping in times of season where we have lots of stormwater. Where all we're doing is pumping abundance of stormwater versus drag on anybody's well for a long period of time. So that is an option as well. Some of the topsoil, stuff like that, I would rather keep the trucky, so very, very minimal to get this project done. I think I can do that. And the reason I think I can do that is on this side, so let's just say this is the one-on-three now. We are talking about, we're talking about the north going more gradual and then up. So this would be a one-on-six. Well, or it's, and the reason we're doing that, two reasons, is because it makes it more aesthetically pleasing for people to walk down to the water on a portion of the lake. And we need to harvest more clay to seal the bottom. So if we do that, we have to strip all the topsoil over here, which is quite thick. We've done soil borings on it. We think by using some of the native soil on site, maybe enhancing it a little bit and screening it, get some of the characteristics that you guys are talking about, not junking it and stuff like that. We think we could cut the import of soil into the project down by quite a bit. It'd be great if it was all together, we could get enough native soil, still be left with this area being four inches yet. We think there's areas in here that could be all the eighteen inches thick. So that was another idea to not have any more truck traffic on any of the roads. The only truck tracks you can see is somebody putting it coming in to do some of the final shaping and restoration. I think that is everything. But I'm very open to questions or further explaining. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. If you were to look at the pond today, this is, this is the road, ponds here. We got some really tall, nice pipelines right here. I want to do whatever we can not disturb both. That's where you're taking the topsoil and clay. Right now, it's slated to take this whole side of the lake and take this down to a one-on-six. And yes, get the topsoil, or get the clay out of here, laid in here. But you're also right on, yes, any topsoil we find in this area right here, we could use to restore some finished areas around here. So what I would like to, I think what we're here, it's going to get awfully close to be a one-on-six and not have, and still leave the trees. So what, what I like to engineer is, or have an engineer do is just say, okay, with leaving the trees, maybe this is the one-on-four, and this is the one-on-six. And by the time you get down here, this would be a one-on-eight. And just get it so that we don't take any of these trees out. Because that, there's probably been a natural beauty there that I like as well. But by doing that, we wouldn't get as much dirt over here. So we may have to spill out into this area a little bit. But this area is mainly today, it's like a public sack, this. So there's really not much trees or vegetation over here anyway. You could shave all that out. Topsoil is quite deep right in here, quite deep right in here. Well, that was the other thing that I thought could be a little bit different than what I proposed. And a lot of this came up based on just pre-existing concerns. Yeah, also I'm open to questions.
Should we do questions or would you like to do your report first?
I think questions will be helpful.
Okay.
You're proposing a couple of alternatives that are different than what you have with your competition.
And yes, you're right, I am. And part of that came from reviewing what Lene said just recently of some of the other concerns. So what I found out today, to get that permit, Lene, for discharging in Silver Lake, that could take up to a year. And I just don't want to see this thing sit open that long. So the one that's within five hundred feet is screened. They said, I already got one of those and all I have to do is amend that. So they think that could be a much quicker permit to take. We're all. But yeah, the the water, the changing the water idea just came from talking to the environmental engineer today about what do we expect for drop agendas? He said, as long as the clay is in good shape. He said, that's what kind of drain that could be is evaporation. They also commented, he says, well, Ross, if you think about it, if you do put a well down here, and let's just say you do have a hole in the clay liner, all you're doing is pumping the water in circle. So it's going into the pond, reaching to the clay, back into the water table. Said, so really, you shouldn't have any drop. He said, no, now in you, you'll put a really good liner here, it won't be doing a lot of this, it'll just be evaporation. But he said, if there was a breach, he says, all you're really doing is pumping water in circles to maintain this level.
Don't you have to do that to restore the property? Certainly not to have. I guess, this becomes, I need something from an engineer with an engineer skill that can play very well. Oh, I'm sorry, the clay cap has to be this depth and our engineer has to go out and do boring and make sure that, that, that cap is, that's all that you can make. It's because that helps you, that helps us. But if you're not going to have the water source. But if you're not gonna have the, the water stored from, um, the ravines, which I'm kind of concerned, I, I don't want to take water from. That water from the ravines is going somewhere, not if it was just being sent to the creek and down, that's one thing. But, um, I don't know if, um, you know, where that water goes. I knew the area, I'm learning, I walked your site this morning. The, uh, the erosion is really bad, that's really nasty. Prefaces where the water is running down the side. Glad I had boots on because, because the bank of water.
They answered much more, the water's going out, ravines, yeah, it's going down the grass, they're, they're irrigating the golf course.
Alright, so my point is, we have a really dry summer. You, you originally were gonna have this line from the ravine, so if we had hot, dry summer, and you have a lot of, uh, as the pond is dropping. You don't want a mud bog that is nothing but a mosquito bass. So you, you're gonna have to have, I think, an engineer tell me, you're gonna need a well of this size, this dimension. And the property is, it's gonna be some sort of covenant that runs with the land on that property that, that, that well has to be maintained and paid for. Um, and monitored, um. So, but then I also need an engineer to tell me that if you have a well that's strong enough to maintain that lake. These people aren't gonna run out of water. Cause like you say, you're on a well, it gets really exciting real bad, if all of a sudden you turn tap and nothing happens.
Yeah, we have all that information, various things here that. Or we did the project, we did a hydro study of the water. So they have that information, so they know what the capacity is, what the levels are. Why this is quite common is when, when people build these ponds, put a well in, they pump water into these ponds. And then what they do is they put a pump over here, they sprinkle it along out of the pond. The reason they do that, that's quite common, so is when you suck water out of the water table, if it's hardened water, it's got rust. Those in this pond, the rust settles out to the bottom. And the pump will suck up the water and sprinkle with it. That way you don't get rust on your house, on all your sidewalks, on your plants. That's why they do that, so this is actually quite common for the lake shore. Of putting a well in, build upon, then suck out upon to do the irrigation. In fact, that's what they're doing at the ravines. And, uh, but he said, you know. They don't have to run their wells as long as it's raining. So, and, and that, you know, the, the big thing we need to figure out with an engineer, I agree, is we're gonna have four acres. Give or take of surface water. In the worst of droughts. What's the burn? But I just said to you, the hundred and twenty gallons per hour. And that's in the worst, that's in the worst of drought. Wow. And twenty gallons. That's a residential.
I, I got all that, but you know.
You got your.
You're not an engineer, I'm not an engineer, I gotta answer this now. If it goes south and we have another surprise with this new plan. We're the newborn, we're gonna get flipped. So like, we're kind of starting over on both sides there. So, and I wasn't even at the November meeting, but I, we read everything I could. I've bugged Linnae with questions, um, and like I said, I walked the site, so, um. But I guess I'm not happy that what you're now proposing is that even though the ravine doesn't want to give you a permanent line. Or any type of long-term commitment, which would be the backup for these people to make sure that their wells aren't put at risk. I needed engineer to say that's a viable plan or it's not a viable plan, and these are the reasons. Cause that, you know, that, that source that told you only a hundred and twenty gallons per hour. Was incorrect, or whatever, because there, and, and like you said, I'm not an engineer.
He was.
Fine, I need somebody with his license.
I have, and, and comments by many.
Yeah.
I, I actually kind of like the idea that the ravines is being taken out of it long term. And that it's, uh, and that it's being controlled solely on that site. I think that's a lot easier for the township to, than the, you know, manage over the long term. I do have questions on, so I tend to, that makes sense what you're saying, like in the fall, you'll have abundance of water. Build upon and, and I like the idea that they're grabbing it upon, as opposed to sucking it from a well and possibly in back. So I think that's a benefit hearing proposal. I, I have a question regarding, uh. So the original engineering review from when we were in here the last time, it showed infiltration rate. At the bottom of the pond was fairly significant, I don't remember all the people, something, but, uh. But you're gonna cap that, so you're gonna grab the clay and you're gonna cap. I, I question, if you look into the sides, I don't know if you had like the sides of the pond. Cause obviously there's sand on the sides and an Olympic tree through the sides and stuff, but I just would want to make sure that sides of all the bottom are capped.
So I'll just explain it for, so this thing was mined like this. Here's the sides. We mined this out of the mine. So this wedge is off clean. So right here, there's probably thirty to forty sheets of clay. We had to get rid of a lot of clay outside to get some of the sand, so we put it all back inside. The, the point where it's mostly. Is something that's happening. So there might be areas here, it might be areas here, where there might be six inches of clay on top of sand. But I'm willing to do any type of pouring out there to show the thickness of the clay in back. I think there's spots in the bottom right now that are five to six feet thick. But we need to do all that, we need to make sure, cause now's the time to do additional water. It's double as hard, oh, there's water in there and it's been pretty consistent, but it's just. We gotta go, we gotta get the initial fill, and I think you'll see what the water's down here now, it's just kind of, it's, it kind of goes down, it comes up, it goes down. We need that to be up here. So we just have to make sure that this play basin, like you say, can hold it. So we're, we're willing to prod this need be and, and down here, and we can get all those thicknesses. I, I would personally rather see a couple of people, just extra insurance. Of down here, cause this is the part where we're the most pressured.
So, you, you know, my, you know, you're saying that we can get water from the ravine in the fall. Right, fall or spring, alright. So you actually have two lights to the apple. If you can get the clay prepared before fall. And then fill it this fall. And we'll measure the depth and see what it'll look like next spring. If, if, if you're right, um, there should be very little if no, um, drop in the level of the water. If there's a big drop in the water, we'll know that there's a problem and we're gonna have to look for some other solution. That way, we're not hung out that say, well, you adopted the plan and our engineer was wrong. And the soil.
Yeah, I agree, that's wise, I, I.
I know what the board thinks about that idea, but have them fill it and see if it works. I mean, I would love to come back next spring and have all these people show up and say, yeah, hell, you know, is, is that idea, water?
I've got a way of finding it, yep. While in winter time is when we get some stab from which two to help keep it full, but we, we gladly, if I go into the fall, that's where I hear the most rains. Freeze spell, freeze spell, melt down. As soon as that golf course is done too, they don't keep irrigating their grass. So that waterfall that they were pulling to do their grass, we can pump here on the good days. Just keep filling this, probably get up to that water level. And then, you know, have the well in here. And then just all we're doing is maintaining that elevation at that four point nine or whatever elevation, keep it there.
So why did you sign on that elevation?
Cause once you go over four point nine, first another people. I'd love to, I'd love to look bigger if I. I'm just.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole nother permit, it drags this thing down the road a hundred years to two years. And if it develops.
You recognize, Dave, would you like to finish with your question? Yes, why not, finish your questions and then we'll move on.
So, I, I like, I, I tend to agree with you there, uh, you know, if you remove the outfall. That, you know, you don't have an outfall that there's unbreakable there, there, we can handle the stormwater. My, my concern, at least just from a commissioner's point of view, is, is let's say. It's regarding the landscape, so you, you seed, seed the sides of the ponds. And then they, uh, establish a frozen place, then all of a sudden it rises, you get a major storm event, the water goes up. Then it sits there for two weeks. It's gonna kill the grass. And then, you know, and then you're gonna have potentially a night unsightly. View of dead grass and stuff. That'd be my only fear with that, at least from, you know, just sitting here, from a, an aesthetic view. I don't know if you're talking.
Well, there's a, what I would say is there's a lot of ponds like this today. Is that a potential to some degree? Yes, but the engineer can tell us also, is on a big rain event, how many inches are we talking about? What is that fluctuation? Like if we're holding at four point nine, we get a five inch rain. Are we adding a foot of water, are we adding three inches of water? They can do that by knowing they're running out of waters, that's the only thing coming in. Our surrounding area is sand, but most of the water is going in initially. The, the only thing that's coming in there, a little bit of the water close by where the soil. But, but for the most part, like all the back property that we've actually bought up against ravines, there's eight, nine feet of sand back there. Water is in your runoff system, it's just instantly. So we could figure that out and know exactly how much fluctuations to expect.
So then, I know Ben was, uh, thinking of that as this as well as, I. Sounds to me like you'd be okay with this, but we, so the design has changed. We, uh, so you, you put down basically what's gonna happen here, how we're gonna build the sink, you, with your proposals and your, you know, adding the, the well. Uh, to build upon and, uh, removing the outfall, all those things. Would you be comfortable with, I mean, we'd get a, uh, professional engineer to stamp it? Say, this is it, it's gonna work and then we have, and I think that would make a lot of us comfortable because we don't really. We're not, we're not.
I, I might as well use spread at the top. They're, they're as good as any. But we'll, we'll get somebody with that's licensed, stand, but.
So I think that would.
Whoever you get to bring it to, bring it to our family, you know.
You have another question?
Oh, I. Well, I, I have some other things to add.
I don't have any questions, I just have a remark, is, uh. Uh, about the special land use, I, I, I don't know how we can approve this, because what they presented to us is not what you're gonna do. So like this, I mean, of course, it's a great discussion, so that you have ideas what we're gonna do, but I don't see how we can move forward and approve this. We would have to postpone it again and then come back with the plan, we heard all our discussions. You know, to me, it's.
But they said this isn't what they want.
But yeah, but so I'm not sure why you even had this discussion, I mean, I, I think it's great, but at the same time. This, we can't, uh, uh, to me, as simple as, was end our discussion, is, you know, we're looking for and make a motion to postpone. And come back, there's no way we can, there's no way I would go to approve this.
I didn't expect that tonight, but I'm not asking you. This is something to be, to tell me here to what I. We all kind of have a general agreement here, that I could spend a month and get these guys prepared, this was important, this, this was the. And some of these things came up based on an engineer's group, who wishes for a new path and, uh, the Navy does some things. So this is where some of the stuff is spurred, so I get it's kind of a living document. But we're, we're open to that.
Yeah, I think that, that is important, I think that this was a very helpful discussion for the planning traditions, since many of them are not here at the original meeting. And, um, yeah, as, as a planning consultant, I would agree that we don't have the same plan as you're presenting, which is fine. I mean, thanks to all, and, and you mentioned you're not looking for a, for a look today. I do want to make sure that before Ross goes, that there's some clear direction as to some of the things that we'd be looking for from the next meeting. Which is, you know, the engineers' reports and stamp plans on this restoration process, hopefully play that. It sounds like we would also like to have a, a well-defined, long-term maintenance plan. And a really ironed out before the next meeting, so we know how long the water is coming from the ravines and then what is the plan moving forward. Maybe that, that becomes the responsibility of the few as the property owner or stakeholders. And then I think it would be helpful to also have this maybe hydrogeologic report. Which I think is different from an engineer's study, uh, related to the wells around their impact on the well. Maybe that is one in the same, but we do need to understand that right now.
Well, the, the other thing that, you know, that I had found in, in reading is, if this is a stormwater pond. And I've read that a couple of times, then I think we need to be careful with regards to slope. Is, uh, if in fact that requires, and it came from, uh, our engineer, in his last comment for future use. If they're seeking this as a stormwater control, then it has to go to the Alvin County Drain Commission, and the current standards to be applied side slopes. No slope one, four and one, five, so I think we need to look at that in this, and here's the call, and I've read this a couple of times in, uh, in our two documents. It's, it's, this is a stormwater management and there's something else coming into play. And we're gonna have to look at slopes. As well as if it's a man-made waterway, isn't our standards also different for slopes?
We could look at that, that man-made waterway, but this is, um. We can look at that one then.
I, I think we need to be clear on that, but in that standard, in this last, last page. So it's possible, slopes.
Well, I think our, our coordinate provides for one, three, right there is the sand.
Man-made water. Each one five, and then one five, so it's like three. But they also mentioned one six over there, one seven.
I had to ask that question too.
I want to say, all that would be left, so as you go up in the numbers, it becomes less.
So like a one, three is basically like a fifteen degree air.
I, I'm just looking at that last comment in regards to our engineer.
Jeff, do you have any questions or comments? I just also want to say that, um, the public comment, I'm exposed, so I know a couple of you have raised your hand. And I'm sorry, but it's not a public hearing, so I, I hope we're addressing your concerns, but we can't comment.
I, I feel like one other thing that, I believe you talked about in your, uh, recommendations, but. Uh, and maybe not in this exact way, but because we're having to be here to review this. You like, it would be prudent to get a, a, an engineer's estimate of product probable cost. And, cause we had talked about doing some kind of performance bond and base that performance bond of projected costs. Otherwise, I'm not sure how you determine.
So can I do that, then, what you come back with?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's currently one in place. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's currently one in place that would be.
Uh, John, Jackie, I'm sorry.
Um, I just wanted to say that if there is a, there is a risk, any of that information should be contained within the drawing.
Okay, we can't hear what's going on.
Did you repeat that for the audience?
I'm sorry. I was just saying that anything that is written in a separate narrative, as it was submitted to the Planning Commission, should be contained as general notes within the legal documents, the engineering documents for the pond. But it should be all one package, two separate.
Any other comments, Jeff? Or, or again? John?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say it's been good to be here first. The, the public hearing, which is eight long months ago, was on Zoom, very difficult for everybody. Um, but in the time since then, Sogartor Township has entered into an agreement, yeah, discovery center, to get input and advice on information projects and things like this. But a two-part question relative to ODC, we have signed this agreement. Have you, was, was the outdoor discovery documented in here, shared with, so, okay. And then, reversely, have they had a chance to review the new documentation presentation from the top here?
No, I, I would not, I did not share that.
Thought we possibly could.
We could.
Especially if we're taking a little more time to hone in on this, let's avail ourselves of that.
And, and the applicant would know that we would share that information, before we see. Well, we don't, we're not saying that now, so that you know, that we don't want to hear that.
Yeah, well, it should be checked.
The public talk.
That's what we're asking them specifically, to make, uh, some judgment, or give us some comments back.
Because I agree, I think we're all saying we need a little more time, we need a little more time, before we convene in an office, but let's also avail ourselves of that challenge.
And we had the discussion with you once about involving ODC.
Right.
And you seemed generally agreeable to it. And, and so I'm just saying, are we walking back from that now?
Well, you guys have a standard, I was. For the most part, we're following a lot of those standards, the only thing that was changing, uh, uh, done. So, at the time of the standard, there was a standard four C. And I believe, being a contractor, I feel like, uh, doing roadwork in here, yeah, there's a standard to use certain type of steel for road, for roadwork in the township. I just want to be treated consistently with what's in the ordinance currently, uh, when this project was presented, I, I can't. If, if we're going to go down a road with the Outdoor Discovery Center that all of a sudden adds this tremendous amount of expense, that's the type of thing that would have maybe canceled the project in the first place, before I were even done the project. Get what I'm saying? Like, the mine in itself. So I've equated all the restoration costs already, and I'm already going to be way over it. This, that's the only thing that makes me nervous with the outdoor people is, you know, I get, there's lots of, there's a big wish list, but this still is a private piece of property, that we do want to follow standards, get done and get done nicely. Hopefully, you've seen that ambition on my part tonight, but I'm just a little bit nervous.
I agree with that word.
With their standard, because I know where they are, we've done work, we've done wetland creation, done stuff with them, and I just. That would be my reservation.
And my only thought on that is that when this was approved, we did have different standards. We've come a long way since then, and we expected you to have come a long way a long time ago too, so we did not make it with carry out this long. I don't think you did, we didn't either. So I just think we want to make this, uh, the best project that we've been with, what we have now. And so that would be one of my concerns, and maybe if, even if it's just seedling information and things like that, it would be helpful for us in the long run, because we do have. So if we could work together, I understand what you're saying, and we're not trying to make this impossible for you. I think it's a beautiful piece of property. I had another question for you, um. And I think as I read all of this, and then what the ravines was going to do, and with, um, wells and things, I, I do want you to know that some of the wells over there in the ravine property are very deep. Very, very deep, and people who live there now do have city water, because the wells were so deep, that they were not getting good water. So I think that's been a bit of a challenge there. Um, I think that anytime we have a construction project over there, they have to put the silt lining in, because everything goes into the storm drain, so they have silt lining in all the storm drain. Would there be kind of a silt lining for this coming into the pond? I, I worry about what goes into this pond for the people who live there.
Now, everything, so a retention pond, there's a couple of things, sometimes they're called sediment ponds.
Right.
So the pump ends up at the top, so the water we begin in is the top surface water, sediment stays, their ponds for the most part will be, will be pumping clean water. So that, that's, if we're related to storming wells, it's just, it's either well water, city water, or stormwater.
And you know, golf courses are very famous for using a lot of fertilizer. Does that end up in that water, and then move over to the pond?
Yeah, I, you know, pretty much can answer that, and I noticed in your, some of the comments that you guys want to be to fertilize the grass too, so.
It's organic, I mean, but.
You know.
Yeah, I don't know, I just wondered if we need to have that water tested at all, should we, or, I don't know.
That'd be, that'd be a question for the engineer, say, if you let them use the water they're pumping in to spray the banks, will that promote the growth, because the fertilizer coming from the Gulf of Europe anyway? But, I mean, if. Yeah, is there even a standard for water like that, and all that's acceptable, just I could ask the.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know either, but. On that, and then, I think I have one other question that may be related, or may not be related, but it is, that property was ravines property that were, it belonged to that unit. And so there was, um, there was a water loop system proposed, where the water would hook up eventually into old elegance, so that if the wells go dry, or, or if they lose their water capacity from their wells, city water would have to run through there, and so it was proposed that it would go through that property. Is it possible for you to provide an easement for that?
Yeah.
If that would be a need in the future, even if you get rid of the land, could the easement follow your land to provide for that?
There aren't, actually, it's an easement that began the ravines, when they sold it to us. And their easement gets them access to get their equipment up that, that hole.
Yeah.
There's that massive gully through there, and they thought if they ever had to do construction on that hole, they would need to get their equipment there, so.
There is an easement there, so would you be willing to, see the, the people who live there are not part of Watermark? Okay, those are two separate, in separate facilities, so when people live there, do all the wrong maintenance of wells and infrastructure, but would you provide, would you maintain that easement and include in that, that it would provide water to Old Elegant in that loop system? And I'm not very good at speaking about that, but I know our fire department has mentioned that it should be there.
Yeah, well, it always makes sense to look for water.
Yeah.
We, that's what we can, so install water, so.
I think, I think right now, if they said, the constructions, that, that.
Uh, more like knowledge and equipment, so just to access, it's access.
Access.
They're wondering, it's, could there be utilities?
Well, I'm very open to that, I, I think the time for discussion on that is.
For the engineer.
Well, no, second use of the property, whether, right now, my partner and I have no, we have no plans.
Okay.
For the property, it's not, we have no, we have no active development plan, we've had to, the neighbors show interest in buying it, but I'm, I'm open to that, that easement has to stay with it, and I don't, I don't think that hinders it by any means to have a city water access, because all that does is gives it that. And like a win-win, I mean, obviously, if you give the, give the, the easement to run water, that means that any development you have there has that option, and that pays the land more value. Yep. I think it stops up by shashay, we shop, now, water, I think, there, on Old Elegant, Ross there.
And so it would have to go through that property.
Yeah.
That, that was one thing that I thought would be beneficial to that neighborhood too. And then, the only other question I had is, there's no mention in any of this about having the elegant compound department um, review, meaning, is that something that they need to do?
They will have to.
Okay.
And, and they've already proved links, so I don't have to involve them on that. They're, they don't, they don't get the, the consolidation from the ashtrays of the pond, that's all decent, but they will have to act with them.
Okay. The reason I, I am a little, like, I really want the water easement to be identified, because if the ravines said, oh, we're going to buy that property, and we'll put condos there, then they could, they, and that's already our easement. I just want to make sure that even then, that water main would be.
I, I think at this point, you wouldn't know where a property that would go, so it would be more of a blanket, you're saying?
Well, it's, it's in the property structure today, I mean, I think it's on the east side of the property, but we've already talked to the ravine, we have, have the easements for them, so in order to change it, I think we're making the most sense to put it on the west side. That's the most, our property is like. Like this, so this is the angle of the dock doors is over here, so right now, I think that easement runs all the way up this property. But I think right here, the pond right here, so you're coming off the road, that water makes you run it, or the easement should, and I can redo this with them, as long as they sign off on it. And that would be the time to amend that, to have equipment access.
I mean.
Right.
And I have one last thing too, is, um, probably in this information, we talked about um, timeframe for working on the property, and it puts seven thirty to five, and I know way back we agreed upon this, it was eight AM to five. And so, um, could we still maintain the eight to five Monday through Friday, and it was no Saturday and Sunday? Okay, because it, it was a little different in the material that we got.
Then, I'm going to still make a goal of trying to, at the deadline, the same, even though we're going through this
Okay.
process, I still think June of twenty twenty-three is doable, timeline, that gives me rest of the summer to figure out some of this engineering, and maybe come together in the fall.
Chair, I'm going to. So, I know we, uh, kind of, not sure what we're going to do with the ODC department, but, which, I just want to throw one comment, or not, not even a comment, but a request, and that can be a, some kind of maintenance and monitoring program with the landscaping, to make sure that it's, make sure it doesn't end up how it is now, you know, just so that, that, that grass gets established, and that, you know, and that is brought up, so that it, you know, maybe it's checked quarterly, you know, and any grills, or, you know, your room is air, and however that, that plan comes up, I'm not the guy to tell you exactly how much, but, uh, but I would like to see something like that, where, uh, we have some kind of plan in place that, that two years from now, it doesn't end up back the other way it is, because there are some significant slopes of that pond, and, you know, in a good rainfall, that water. So it'll, it'll corrode the slopes, unless that vegetation is established.
That'll help a bit, once that vegetation, that'll.
And that's what I mean, it's, if we can make sure that that vegetation gets established through that monitoring period, then I think it'll be, I think it'll be a nice pond.
And we're currently maintaining, or, a lot of this would, I put the, 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 all the trees on there, we're mowing that, so yeah, added around. Fold this all together with this, maintain, so, yeah.
Kelly May, what do we need at this time?
Uh, about twenty action, just, or do we need an action?
I think I would do the motion to postpone.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm hearing, I don't want to tell you what to do.
Not really, I've got that, um, but I want to know if, in that, uh, because we're not, it's not even dated, because we're not even looking at this, we're, this is. We're not even, we didn't, we're just going to postpone his, his application. But my concern is timeline. In other words, he's going, you're going to have to come back to this body before you do any work, about everything that we've asked for, so.
When you want to come back?
Do, would, would, put a timeframe on, because this has been going on long enough. When do you think that you can come back, so that we can see what your plan is?
Uh, well, I, I would expect that they would need, well.
So I want to put a timeline, I want to put a timeframe on.
The biggest time crunch thing is going to be the Eagle. So if I apply for the Eagle permit now, it could be six months.
All right, so, but you weren't going to need an Eagle permit if you were, um.
You requested, uh, two of them.
Well, you said that you would only need to amend the one permit that you already have.
Yes, it's about a mandate, I have no idea what that could take. That, that's why I feared it would take a long, Eagles is really backed up right. So, um, but if that goes well, we just have a, you know, I could probably have that answer within a month here on the timing for that, but that would be the only thing that would push this thing down a ways, and then the engineering as well, these engineers are all very backed up. So, those two things, as far as us getting there with equipment, doing all the piping, all that stuff, very doable in that timeframe we talked about, but the engineering and the permitting are two things.
I think you're talking about two different deadlines, so we don't need the, I don't believe that we would need the Eagle permit to take the action or approve.
Right.
What we would like the timeline of is, at what planning commission would you return, what meeting would you return to? And in order to return to that meeting, we do, we do need you to meet the submittal deadline for that. So I don't believe August would work, um, that deadline.
Eagle permit possibly?
Um, so then. So the deadline for the September meeting is August twenty-second.
Yeah, that's going to be too quick, but what, why don't I, I have to talk to all these engineers and talk to them about their schedule before I can make that commitment. But I think it's doable yet, September, October, to be had the submittals and meet in the fall, the mid-fall.
But you are maybe hoping to do some work this fall, like, uh, as you mentioned, that cuts it out, but it doesn't seem like that. So the submittal deadline for the October meeting is September nineteenth?
I would think that would be the earliest, oh, in, with what we.
The next month, what's, what's next, October?
October seventeen. And then the next one is November?
November seventh.
For the November, November seventh?
It's a deadline.
The deadline for the November meeting is October seventh.
That you would have all that, everything, and a new proposal, and the site plan, the whole, whole area that you can, uh, by October seventeenth to meet, uh, for the November meeting?
We'll make it a goal, but, I mean, we'll push like crazy and make it happen.
Okay, let's, let's go for it. Okay.
Is there a motion to postpone?
I, I, yes, I will make a motion to postpone, uh, special approval used for Top Grade at sixty-one thirty-five, one thirty-third Street, um, with the, uh, due to the change in applicant plans, renovation of site, uh, with the, uh, goal to come back with the new plan for the November Planning Commission meeting, with a deadline, uh, to submit materials is October seventeenth, is that what you said?
Yeah.
October seventeenth. October seventeenth. Well, if you should come back with plans, so yes, you would have to come back with plans and you've heard everything tonight. And we would see that in the plans.
Got my work cut out.
And you have the recommendations from Linay.
Right on.
And that, everything else that we talked about.
This guy has been taking a pulse.
And if not, if, there's a recording.
Can't wait for the moment. There is a motion.
You're supporting?
Oh, I didn't get it.
You're supporting it?
So can it be an official comment at this point?
Yes, um, okay, so right now, we have a motion on the floor to both, um, the, um, agreement with RJ Prospect to top grade at sixty-one thirty-five, one hundred and thirty-third Avenue. And the goal is that they will return with updated, completely updated materials for our November meeting, of which the deadline is October seventeenth. This motion was made by Webster and supported by, oh, or, or, supported by voter. Is there any more discussion or comments from mission members?
Uh, I, I have a question. I was wondering about the eight pounds of grass seed or the high growth seed per acre. I was just curious where the eight pounds came from, because everything I read seemed like it should.
It actually came from an old, there was a note in a meeting minutes like two years ago. A typical seeding rate is between one fifty and forty-five dollars. We'll get that to be a part of our package.
Okay.
But it's current, not limited to top grade. Sorry, she, current, current's our CEO. If he'll be helping to put the package together, he'll be communicating.
John, any, or, Eddie?
No.
Me? Mr. Butler?
Hold on.
Linay, any other? There's a motion on the table, and we're going to have a roll call though. Butler?
Yep.
Run.
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 It's run.
Calvert?
Is that me? I can't hear you.
Calvert?
Yes.
Eily?
Yes.
Israel's, yeah. Webster?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we're getting onto new business. Alright. Just wanna check, thank you for last month, when we took a look at our policy, not really policy, but instead our rules of procedure. Um, so we looked at that and we did it very quickly in a meeting. I'm going to give you a copy of that right now, our drafts from that, let's see. Um, wanna make sure. Did I do that right? Or, no, okay. John, Denise, Jackie? My copy. Ken, let me just grab, why did I do that? I'm sorry, I'll get you your copy.
Hold on.
Hey, um, put this on in my bag. Um, so this was just kind of our initial work on it, and, um, Denise met with me ahead of time prior to the meeting, Jackie met with me after the meeting, because she had taken copious notes, so we went through this. We also pulled the MCL rules and, um, information, and there's two chapters in this document that we, do you have it? You don't have it?
No, people, I mean.
Okay, um, that we wanted to share with Linay and the attorney, just to get their feedback from this too. So it's by no means complete, but it is. There, you might need the things left. It's not complete, but it is a draft of what we discussed, and there are questions that I proposed on there, uh, from you, from many of us in the discussion. Um, just to kind of highlight a couple things, Denise, you talked about, um, changing advisory committee to special committee. This group said, leave an advisory committee, that's pretty much what is covered. And, um, so we left it that way, um.
We got MTA.
And MTA, so we changed our, our common, our, what we were meeting at multiple times, so I don't know what's.
Yeah.
It's advisory.
We, we, we blow it.
Well, special.
It's cement.
Yeah. Advisory, bye. Uh, I get it.
We changed the order a little on, on chapter one, and we left advisory committee, it's advisory committee. Um, planning commission establishes that sometimes people ask if it should be the board. It's the planning commission board does not have to vote on that. Um, talk some bit about meetings here, and there's references to, uh, the Open Meetings Act and different things, um. Forty-eight hours is the time of notice, and that was the MCL rule of two, um. I don't know that there was anything else in that part that was too controversial, or that we had a lot of discussion on it. This, uh, agenda for public hearings, it's in here because it was in the other one, but it's a procedural thing, and so we left it in there. It's not a law, it's just, but it is according to Robert's rule, so you go through that, that is section two point five, all the way down, and it does talk about, um, we added to the document possible outcomes of number eight, H five, motion to accept motion to, uh, stuck with condition, motion to post off and deny. So, um, and then number nine was something we added to, and that was strictly from Robert's rule, and I had them on the sheets, I still have the sheets there. But, um, it's, it's really good information, we decided, for people who, um, need to understand what the planning commission does, so number nine just says that there's no second, without a second, the motion's not considered, there's all these things. We did, um, discuss cell phones in here, and whether or not we can use cell phones at the table, from everything I've read and all the data, no, we absolutely cannot, it gives people the impression that we're contacting each other and saying, I'm not gonna call for him, or whatever, they don't know, and so we don't use that, but it's really important to know, the auditors can use their cell phone, they can record anything that they want, and they can photograph. So, I just, I just want you to be aware of that, and it's, it's in here. So it's not permitted by commissioners, but it is permitted by the public, but we would request that they turn off ringers if they're ringing, but I don't wanna sound like if they're there, turn off your cell phones. It's the common, um, chapter three is pretty much the same, chapter four of came right out of some of those documents too, um. The things that were in there that I wrote in red, that like, do we need to do this? And I wondered about grant opportunity to, that would be something there, um. Conflict of interest, we sort of said, love the lawyer, look at that. Um, I did add on there that if projects that come in that are in line with the master plan, how do we handle that? And, um, we had people request maybe planning commissioners directly, and, um, according to MML, that's not appropriate, as it creates a potential conflict, and it's giving them information, maybe that's not gonna pass the conditions, so we don't wanna get into that legal kind of. So, um, it, it is in here in five point four, and I just wanted to make sure it was covered enough. And, um, there's, um, just things about conflict and bias, which we were always very careful of in Holland, so I, I should ask if that's something concerned about, um. And then, I, all of that was directly taken from what we already got, acceptance of gifts, I thought was interesting too, maybe you saw that back. I'm seeing a couple places that, um, we cannot accept gifts in, in and over and above ten dollars, as commissioner. But then later, I read that actually the township board can accept gifts um, from someone that came before us, but then they determined how that could would be used. So I thought, okay, so that's why I added it under number two. Um, so, uh, we wouldn't encourage someone to give the township board a gift, but I think some of the approval that we made have made some contributions to the township, and that is appropriate, so, um, they just don't come to us personally. Okay, um, Linay is looking at number six, and I think she already did it. And she's gonna provide that information, and then, um, I wondered if we should add site visits and court enforcement to the, that section, I'm on page eleven. And, um, and I also wondered if we should include reference to your process chart.
I said no, no.
Change, okay, let's say we'll change, alright. I just didn't know if people needed to know that there are process chart, and then, um, that's it, I mean, really. And so that's kind of what we did. You all did.
We did.
You did.
I will be right.
Sure, so we can take a, a break.
I'll automatically for you.
I didn't expect the changes. I'm sorry. You can do it next time.
I'm more than happy to do it, you let me track it, I have done that paper many times in my office.
Do you wanna redo it? From the old document?
I think there's a bunch where you can compare it to. Uh, if there's open a Word document, then I can go, okay, and that's fine. Maybe for that, uh, but I wouldn't find work, you know? Any changes I made, I could do, practice things. Come back when you send it.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Is it in Word? Is it in Word? Is it original in Word or is it PDF?
The original, I think it was in Word. And Word on my computer.
I thought it was in Word, so you might be able to compare this.
I received it in Word, so. So I can send them both out. So, uh, we're back, I'm great, meeting back in order. And, um, now we're at number two, or we're at number two, B consultant. And, um, I do have information about that, but I'll gladly hand out to, to, um, David, and then if you wanna, are you?
Um, I don't have the memo in front of me, but, um, here's the. Essentially, we did have our first meeting, uh, there's a steering committee, that's Daniel, Becky, Dave Eily, David Giraffe, our consultants, and myself. Um, and we're gonna have regular meetings, I don't know that we decided on the regular meeting, but usually it would be Tuesday when I'm here in the office. Um, we will also have an advisory committee, um, and then, or, I'm sorry, we will reach out to the advisory committees, so your three committees, um, and David wants to step up, so he can say all these things. With one o'clock being rolled here, there's two thirty, a panel of housing and four o'clock, development group.
But that works. If not, we're.
We can do it soon, we can always change the date.
And the order is possible too, I mean.
You're gonna have to ask the group. I can't speak to my group.
And maybe not everyone has to be there, I think it can be optional, because all of your priorities, it really gives a chance to maybe confirm those, or for him to add the background.
And I think he specifically wanted to meet with the chair.
Yeah, that's what I wanted, I think at one point you said, maybe chairs and vice chairs.
I think because we, you know, really kind of sun something, that, um, because hopefully send them a thank you. Um, right. Try it, not just, but, um, if you, but he would like to spend time with you, at least the chair.
Yeah, that's always good.
On, on this night.
Okay, so what time would you like? Are you okay with two thirty? Okay. Are you okay with Daniel with four o'clock?
Sure.
Are you okay with four o'clock?
I am, I'm not sure I'm okay with the night.
Okay.
I don't have my calendar, so.
Okay, he is only here on Tuesdays?
I think he's possible, I think he should Tuesday because, yeah, yes, he does.
No, my feeling is.
And he can also do it, or be a phone call. Instead of a person, he could already, even though he will be here, he can do it by himself.
I would prefer meeting.
I, yeah, I think that you should really.
Of course, yeah.
Like everything, um, any of you are welcome to comment, and to attend the meeting.
And then, um, David's gonna go in first. Yeah. And I think, um, a board member.
Stacy.
Stacy.
Yeah, she, you recommended Stacy.
I, it's the same, same thing, we were talking about some other board members, uh, but I mentioned that, you know, about the, he's, he's on our calls, and she, she's.
Oh, right.
She's made it through some of our very difficult calls. So I thought, well, that might be, that might be good, I know we thought of a friend as well, but, you know, I'm glad Stacy confirmed. Um, and then we're gonna schedule some drop-in sessions or phone interviews with up to ten individuals, that would be Monday, August fifteenth. Staff is not invited to those, that is just David and the person who wanted to sign up, so.
How are you?
What we would like to do is get names and emails or contacts from any of you, um, please send them along. Um, I mean, I have, I think Lynn, her colleague would be a great one, just from the experience with the Dollar General, her review of our organs, I was pretty impressed with that. Um, but please send other names, and if. And it doesn't have to be her either. I am just going to, you know, that was one name, but each of you, if you have others that you think we should speak to. So I can follow up tomorrow with an email to you all after that.
Um, well, and there's township, key stakeholders in the township.
Right.
I think that Daniel has already asked her about that information, right? He already developed the march list. And I don't want to educate people.
I just have, so I didn't ask anyone. I just have an ongoing list and I kind of divided it into categories. Um, and I, I made that public. I can make it public with the rest of the planning commission. It's just on Google Docs. So I can invite everyone to view it and you can edit it from there and just add. And then if you do have a contact for that individual, if you could include it, that would be great.
Okay, so you'll follow up with the email on the side.
I can follow up.
For recommending somebody. Be prudent if we ask them first and make sure that they're willing to do it, or do you want township to approve?
I think you could do a little of both. I mean, I think, I mean, we could do a nice, I mean, we have time for, so. Certainly mention, you can mention to them, but you know, well worded in such a way that, you know, we understand that you have an interest in the community. We want to offer you this opportunity. We understand your time is valuable. If you can participate, this is one way. Please know that there's gonna be other options. I mean, we're gonna have public hearings too. So I think that's how we word it. We're not gonna say Dave Ily said that he would be doing it. So we wouldn't. We would just say that, you know, your name.
I just wanted to be able to, like, if you were to do it, then I would say that you're successful.
Yeah.
You asked them that thing.
Right, yeah. So we would, we would. That work?
Yeah.
Sounds good. And then I think that's about it. Oh, there's a timeline back there. We're continuing our conversation with Dave. Maybe we pretty much, I think, said that the structure and format is fair game for the ordinance. He knows that we wanna have, you know, tables and charts and easy tools to be able to, you know, quickly discern standards. Um, I made a Google sheet and, and for Deb, it's gonna be shared as well, but it's just all the notes I've taken over the years. I may need that data changed. It is quite expensive. Um, so Dave has access to that.
Well, you could love someone taking some. If you have that much. I would imagine there's some overlap between your list and.
You know, some, you should look at my list, but my list is, uh, there is some, you know, but there are many others.
And your list is in the same place on Google.
Yeah, we have a Google Drive. I don't know if that's where you added that list or not, but.
I think I created a new folder, but I can move it into that folder.
You should have one at home.
That's, oh, I forgot.
Is that home, the one that we had in place a while?
I think that's a different, that's a special, that's a document which can be derived itself. So I created a drive here. I don't know that you'll have the link to the drive.
That'd be great to see your feedback.
Not very well. I mean, I said to Dave, I'm sorry, it's not, you know, page by page. It is really all the same. This is your question. Is there any time that he's going to meet with the ZBA? Because they also are a major player within the zoning ordinance and whether the ZBA has something to, to offer in regards to what they're seeing. That's a good question. We do not specifically have that. I haven't, I think it is a, I admit, I did not even think about that. Probably because we don't meet very often. I could never have met him over a year. But there must be experts too, guys. Again, I admit it's coming in for a variance. They better know the zoning ordinance. Uh, the other one is, I see that regards to a public hearing. That's like three point three. Can I? Am I to understand that particular public hearing ends to the planning commission meeting and that we are looking to finalize our draft? Is that correct? Is there a time that we can have a public hearing prior to that, so that people can just see it? There's nothing, it's just, it's an open house? That they are able to, because it's, it's not just people here on Blue Star. In the other township and, you know, I wonder sometimes whether our other township members really are engaged because we are on the, on this western side, but there's more to the township.
I think he had, I think there was some type of open house in his proposal. Um.
Yeah. And that we invite.
The thought was that it would be before the planning commission meeting. And maybe that three point one, like that open house kind of introduced the new ordinance, get the comment, and then there's the final draft and then the hearing. So I'm thinking that that open house.
So if we look at, if that is what it is, then having nothing else on your agenda would likely be.
All this.
Yeah, would necessary because again, uh, we look at the zoning ordinance, it's pretty thick. And now you're going to go through it and you better not have anything else on your agenda. You're gonna really have a, a true discussion with your township. So how do you do it somewhere? If you have another, where you just.
Or five sections or whatever.
Well, that you do it another day and you have charts and then they just come in for a question and answer.
Yeah, well, when, as we get closer to that. That, you know, that simple observation, I, I understand if they aren't being very. Yeah, if we're here before that, I think I did that.
So I would think your ad people would be very concerned with some of your zoning that might change. And in your ads. And that we sometimes don't think about them. Just think about the residential in this area and Blue Star and focus. I'm really here.
And I think as we get into it, we'll have a better understanding about the, the changes as well, I mean. But maybe there won't be much there, but maybe there will be the other thing. So, yeah.
And especially if we think that there might be some changes.
Well, we're gonna think around. Yeah. Okay, so Daniel will send out a follow up email about the, um, members for the stakeholder input name. It sounds like everyone is confirmed with these dates and times, so put those on your calendar and John will verify. Um, we, we're gonna add Stacy who are steering the hearing committee. I'm gonna talk to Dave about the ZBA item, but for sure like to add a, a ZBA member or two to that. Well, Dave's on the ZBA blog to that, uh, stakeholder input. And then I'll follow up with Dave about the open.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. I have one other additional question about this and, um, I would, you know, since the reading, it said, um, could cancel any further business with the ZBA? If you're doing a project like this for a period up to one year? Is that something we want to do or would we, if we're in the midst of looking at this, do we want to take in a large project that should go to the ZBA? Potentially or not? I, I just think, uh, Holland Charter Township that do the.
To another word, you put a part for a line variance.
Yes.
Question because of where you're at in terms of a change of order. So any standard is, you're really with the moratorium on all.
I don't, I haven't thought about that. Probably because we have.
Right.
Wasn't the last one.
Being a little.
Garage.
The last ZBA was, oh, was like Shore Motel. And they're in Gooseberry. And then before that, it was, yeah, it was in addition to, uh, legal.
That was the Holland Street. Yeah. It's not.
Yeah.
It's so rare. I do, I, I feel like it'd be a good idea. They said to circumvent any, you know, somebody coming in and feeling it might sound potential issues.
Something that maybe you're not up to the board. We can talk to these.
We can take that.
I think we can recommend. Recommend that the board.
All right. Why don't we put it on the August agenda?
Yeah.
Well, can we say that it's a recommendation for the commission?
And the reason?
The reason.
Because it will be part of the updating.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, I definitely would want our attorney to weigh in on that. I would hate for somebody who's building a house and there is a variance that it just makes a ton of sense. They have steep slopes and whatever it is and they can't get it and they want to build this garage and get the fall. But I don't know.
Uh, before it's more for any personal development.
For.
Individual residence.
For variance.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that's a way around. I, I guess I'm just wanting to make sure we get the legal consideration.
Well, if you look at the timeline, it is that in January, they're looking at a formal draft. I'm wondering at that point, there's, okay, when you start to do a formal draft, well, you're pretty close. So up until January, after January, because you only starting at four more months. If this is deliverable, it's April, so starting in January, put on a moratorium. Because you're so close.
And you're not gonna be building anything if they.
Oh, so the idea is to, right now, you know.
A lot of it, come January is.
Once we have a formal draft and then have a more foreign start when we have a formal draft.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Or the open house, whenever, whenever you publish your document, that principle we're looking at.
Yeah, I see that now. Yes. I think that's an important clarification.
And it's true for time.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and then you know, that's how they're, someone's like, oh, better get it in.
Yeah. Well, I think that's what we ran into with the pond. I mean, they knew that, people knew we were.
Right.
You know. And that's why I thought, I mean, we can do, what I read in the bylaws was that you can do a moratorium up to, but not beyond one year. And so you could actually do a moratorium for six months even now on, on some of those. I mean, you can approve an issue with a garage. You can't.
But, but I think that this is, but I would, but if it is, you know, from the point of the draft until the adoption. Yeah.
I don't, I think that's.
You think that it's okay to wait till the draft?
We have one garage area that's four years.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. Okie doke.
And wasn't there a housing moratorium on Lake Shore for a while?
Yes, I think there was.
Yeah. Yeah, they jump over.
And there was, um.
There was a more.
There's, there's often more for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they're building, you know, they both do that. Um, but you want to just make sure you're not singling out some more.
Sure.
For you. Okay. So thank you. It was good to meet the consultant from the methods of moving quickly and thank you to the board for approving that. Um, I think that you'll be very busy. Um, moving on to, I haven't seen township board update.
Okay. So last month I gave you the June updates when it wasn't official meeting. I submitted that to Jennifer. Minutes. Tonight, I'm just going to talk about the board meeting July thirteenth. Um, we had presentations were made by Melissa, who's the executive director of Urban. Karen Lewis, who's chair of the tri committee, who's like, they reported on the success of the recent waste collection day that we supported from yesterday. Uh, we made some appointments to the zoning board of the hills, ironically enough. Uh, two appointments were made to the ZBA. Uh, one was a reappointment for dress system to be appointed for the new three year term. Harry Adams, who was in the audience here tonight, was appointed as a full member of the ZBA. He's been serving us. Uh, Fourth of July fireworks. We did approve a request of Rotary Club to make four thousand dollar contribution to the fireworks. But we had an interesting discussion and we did put a condition on that we would be requesting that Rotary start exploring alternatives to fireworks to celebrate the Fourth of July. It's a discussion on the effects fireworks have on that wildlife. Yes. Riverside Drive dugout road. Uh, we approved the township manager and engineer proceeding with a engineer design for a waterline replacement project along those two roads. Uh, township must address this waterline issue at some point moving forward with the engineer design. They make the project additive to receive up to a three hundred fifty thousand dollar ARPA grant funding from Allen County. County will be supporting this project. You know, we know for a long time it's needed, so the sooner we can do it, perhaps the better. Uh, Road Village, uh, we approved a resolution to place a proposal for a Road Village renewal of this November ballot. In addition to voting to have the village renewal of the ballot, we also voted to one override the heavy rollback. If you want to know about heavy rollbacks, you can ask me outside the meeting. Um, we're restoring some, some, some things that the state had taken away from us. Uh, when they had no money, now they have. So we restored the original, original village rate that had been approved by majority of our folks. But we also amended it and I want to give kudos to Mr. DeFranco on this one, I think. And, you know, his ideas and suggestions. So the new, if, if the Road Village is renewed, and they always are, um, there will be some new language that allows spending of that village on not motorized trails, sidewalks, and pedestrian safety. So not just on the just on streets. Building official, um, the board approved the creation and posting of a new multi-position of building official. That position descriptions finalized and posted on the township website. It's on the D with M P L and M T A. So that's. Part of this has to. Who's our?
Eric, Eric Davis.
Eric. Yeah, you guys.
Davis.
Eric Davis. Kind of moving into a much more limited position. Doing inspections for that whole force of all south. That's building official that's the proud. See what happens.
And we'll take that reinforcement to, isn't that a combination?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But only going to.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And that's what we've been.
No, good point. We've been striving to improve and increase our.
So you have to see.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Someone come in and. Our goal is to make this tired sooner than later. And then this, yeah, just kind of related to all this Jennifer. Surprise is her last job, life, her last job. She has a new job. It's her last day with us. So that obviously has an effect on how we're proud. Changes in staff.
Anything hard to say beyond the fact that you like to find that.
I was the second.
I have it, yeah.
How's the, uh?
That would be.
That's maybe, yeah, it's a parks commission. Sorry. Yeah, I haven't heard much about that lately. But I'm done with my report yesterday. We're meeting on August tenth. Pretty good, um, given Matt Lapidowski, he initially thought he would have a plan to inspire our July meeting. Uh, or fire two meeting, I, it does, you know, so it's a dream. Or, um, there's July meeting. And he tried to make that, and so I said, well, who can get it to us, let us know? Because, um, we have a gentleman who does our brass and update, uh, upgrades of the park.
And he tried to make that, and so I said, well, who needs to get it to us, let us know, because we have a gentleman who does our brass and update, upgrade the park. Who is ready and willing to get started, because we would like to have ready to be running in August, because that's when the park could be started. Unfortunately, Mitchell Everdus, he came down with COVID, so he is quarantining now, and it's not feeling particularly awful, but not, it'd be great. But he thinks he will still have the meeting by, by August, and, I mean, I, as soon as I get it, I want to call the cross-country coach, saying, this is what he proposes, is there anything really bad, or at least start crafting the trail. Because some of the trails are basically laid out already, but the brass there, do we bring in wood chips, I mean, that's what I'm waiting for, this last day, architect tell me, and I'm waiting, and I'm not. It is what it is.
And I have two quick things. As treasurer, just to give you a little, some, some fiscal news, which is all good news, you know, the fiscal year ended on June third. So I reported on how we're very proud to report that our general fund revenue finished the year eight percent, I had a bunch of, and spending within the general fund, it's nine percent. Commended, and another thing, this was a goal of our, this board when we started, our pension plan was severely underfunded, only a half percent. From the sixty percent of the state watch list, and it just began before, so we have increased, made an extra count of the extra donations the last even years, and we're now at sixty-two percent. Over that threshold. That's good. We don't have a lot of people on the pension plan, but there's some people out there collecting, and all the current staff.
Any other comments by anyone? That's meeting is related to the staff, or there's John, John, okay, thank you.
Do you want to mention briefly you and or Daniel, so of Parks and Conservation Village?
Well, we're, we're going to be doing, deciding, we're going to propose to the board a conservation village to be included under the member ballot, to put up with roads, obviously. But we don't think there are any other villages so far that, I just don't want to have too many villages where people at the point they just say no.
Exactly.
And so we're having a tune in, whether that's fifth or fourth or half or one, and tune in next week, we'll have that decision.
Okay.
I need a motion to.
I do, I should send it there.
Go move.
I'm staying here tonight.
Oh, you are?
What, in the office?
No, I'm staying at the.
Oh, it's nice.